Good evening, Dighton. Welcome to the Town of Dighton Plan and Board Regular Meeting. It's Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. Please join me for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And reminder that this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Confirm the next meeting is Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And on to the first order of business, which is to review, discuss, and act on Hunter's Hill subdivision, map 21. Lots as listed in the agenda. And map 22, lots also listed in the agenda. We'll be talking about the cost to complete, minor modification in the Form A application. Somebody here tonight to present on this?
I actually brought some 11 by 17s to make it a little easier for everybody. Why don't we do the... We have a couple of things on the agenda. So we have the point to talk about, which Lee is here. He can discuss that with you. We have our Form A plan, and we have the community center. So might as well, is it okay if we start with the Form A plan?
Yeah.
All right. It's Evan Watson, W. Engineering, representing the applicant, Hunter's Hill Land Bill, Hunter's Hill LLC. And what we have here is a Form A plan, and what this does is, you can see here's the ring that's created with the Clubhouse Drive and Miranda Way. And there's a large open space parcel in the middle. And what we would like to do is take lots R-31 and R-32 and convert that to open space, and then modify these lots to add one lot, an extra lot here. That way, we'll be able to have the clubhouse on just open space, which is allowed by the permit. And then we get the lot back over here. And there was enough room. So, and then all in all, we end up with the more open space parcel F1 ends up actually being a little bit bigger. So you end up getting more open space back.
Is that reflected, those changes are reflected here?
Yes, on this Form A plan.
Oh, 32 is up here now? Top, right? Oh, back there. Okay, I can see it now. All right. And 31 is, looks like... 31 goes away, you're getting 32 there. Okay. Yeah, it sounds like the entire purpose of this is just because that's where you want to place the clubhouse.
That's right.
In the subsequent paperwork here. Okay. Yeah, this seems pretty straightforward to me. Gentlemen on the board, do you have any questions for the applicant here? Okay, everything seems pretty straight. So I don't have any concerns here. Do we, should we be voting on these individually? Carrie?
The Form A.
Has to be, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. So I think at this time, is there anything further?
No.
On this topic, okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the Form A application for map 21 lots 32 and 38?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. So that's Form A. Got it. All right, what's, which is next here? This is the minor modification for the clubhouse, yes?
That's right. So if you recall, when we got the original special permit for the modification of Hunter's Hill, one of the criteria is that we provide a community center as part of Phase 1 of the project.
Right.
And at the time, we didn't have it designed, or it wasn't fully contemplated, and there was some... We wanted to talk to conservation a little bit about the placement of it, and so we've done that now. So on the cover sheet, you can see it shows where we're planning the community center. It's right along the bend of Clubhouse Drive. And now that we took away those two lots, it works out nice where it's, on this side of the road is just the community center and a mailbox kiosk, because the postmaster general, they're no longer delivering mail to individual houses in subdivisions. So they always want a mailbox kiosk, so we provide access for that. And then also on this plan, we need to, in order to make this happen, we need to fill in a little wetland. It's actually a non-jurisdictional wetland in the eyes of the state, but the local bylaw takes jurisdiction over it. So we're in the process now of getting permission to have that filled in and replicate where this green area is. And just so you know, this whole stretch, you can kind of see on the aerial photograph, is barren. That's, there was a roadway plan there in the original design, and it was excavated. So now there's just a lot of bare earth and, you know, groundwater breaks out and runs down the road and everything. So we'd like to restore that as wetlands and buffer zone habitat. So that's what we're looking to do. So here's the community center, this gray blob area here is the wetland we're looking to fill in. And we have the community center. We have, I think in the decision, it was prescribed that we have a pool, one bocce court, one shuffleboard, and one pickleball. But after talking to the members that live there now, they thought two pickleball courts would be better. So we have two pickleball courts. So you can access through this drive that comes up, and we can exit right there. And then also we have a separate little turnaround for the mailboxes. We have pedestrian crosswalks that bring you across to the sidewalk on the other side of the street in three spots. There's a little area here that we can, if somebody has a golf cart or a similar type of vehicle, they can park them along here and get right up into the community center. And there's 25 parking spaces. As far as drainage is concerned, we didn't need to do any additional piping or structures. Everything's going to flow into the structures that are already installed and flow through the piping that's already installed. All the drainage that had been previously designed was designed to accommodate that other roadway I talked about and all the lots that were on it that are not going to be there anymore. So our calculations show that this is actually a lot less than what it was designed to handle in the first place. The only thing drainage-wise that we were asked to do by Weston and Sampson, the town's review engineer, was to add some roof infiltrators onto the side there, which we were happy to do. And then also, all of this goes to Stormwater Basin 4. And they appropriately observed that the previous owner did not install a four bay, which is just a check dam essentially near the inlet pipe to it. So we can install that when the water level is low like it is now. So no problems meeting with what we were asked to do. We have a bunch of plantings all around it. And then stormwater will go into the swale and get picked up just the way it was in the original design. So we had a lot of those things incorporated in the original design. And now we're just putting the building and its other apartments there.
Okay. This is yesterday. This is with the, with Lisa Caladoni at this point, right?
Correct.
Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
They're still, according to the last email we received from her on the 3rd, there is still pending Weston and Sampson review, right? Has there been any further updates since the 3rd of September?
I have not heard, no. She said she... I think they're meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
We're going to close out the appointments tomorrow night. We've gotten their review and we've responded to their comments.
Okay.
So we've completed that whole process with them.
Okay. Yeah, so they, so they opened a public hearing, so it sounds like that's been open and closed? Do you think it's still open?
Still open.
It's open.
They'll close it tomorrow.
Okay, close, and they'll, and then they'll act on it tomorrow? Got it.
We also went to Stormwater earlier today. Just, we have a Stormwater permit. So this was just updating them on the change of the plans, and they were happy with that. They just said to...
Was recommended by Weston and Sampson?
Yeah. And they just said, keep us update as things progress. You know, they just wanted to, us to check in once in a while, so that was fine.
All right. I don't have any, I don't have any questions for the applicant. I don't know, gentlemen have any questions for the applicant?
How many square feet is it for the building?
About 3,500.
3,500?
3,700, yeah.
3,700?
With the covered porch, yeah.
The 25 parking spaces is about what's required, or the under, over?
I think I have the parking table on here, but if it was five per thousand, it would be a little bit over.
So it'd be over, okay.
I'd also like to just mention that the plans that were originally submitted when we sent it to you, they were revised with conservation. I have two paper copies here for your records. And if you were to issue an acceptance, I just wanted to make sure you referenced the right plans, so...
Yeah, if we were to issue an acceptance tonight, it'd be contingent on the decision with the Conservation Commission.
The previous plan.
Yeah, yeah, so even if, even if we do go forward with that, it would, it's the final word, so to speak.
Thanks.
This would be retroactive on our part. You wouldn't have to appeal before us any further. Any questions? Gentlemen? So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this modification, contingent upon minor modification for the clubhouse and community amenities for this Hunter's Hill subdivision, contingent upon the approval of the Conservation Commission.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any decisions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that's five ayes. You want to take a pause and sign things? You can sign the Form A, right?
Yes.
Just pause for a brief intermission? Oh, no, 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 we're not doing that. I was talking, I was talking to the audience, sorry. No, 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 no reason. People get to experience this real time, man. Local government at its finest. Isn't that you? Uh, we have, well, we have it. We have it from the applicant.
Yes, his and middle, but Weston and Sampson's under Weston and Sampson's review. And I did not get that report. They were asking for a full copy of the plan, so I scanned and sent that to them yesterday. Because he said he was wrapping it up. We haven't heard tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
And I checked my email just now, hoping that it wasn't there.
Is that something we need to act on? Or it's an acceptance?
You don't have to act on the four.
Sir?
Yes, you have to, you'll have to...
Accepted.
Accepted.
This is the Weston and Sampson?
Yeah, the cost to complete, they'll have to do a vote to accept the cost of the...
Is they?
They're reviewing.
They haven't responded. They have the information. And I know Jim Riordan, he's on vacation, so we left it with Jim here soon. And he was asking for a couple of things on the plans, so I sent those to him yesterday. And I haven't heard anything. I just sent him another email asking him to leave the tour.
Three months.
I know, I know.
It's an extra. It's an extra. Do we have to...
I don't know why it's, yeah, I was testing the audio. I don't know why it's not joining.
Go back.
It's that audio.
I had tested your microphone and it works. It's clearly catching.
Oh, the audio is not coming out?
No, this video is going off of Zoom. It's working on my cameras, but if anyone joins on Zoom, they won't be able to hear you.
Yeah, some, something's...
But thankfully, it's just me joining you.
This is what happened last time.
And I thought I went through it.
I've never, I've never seen it. I've never seen it.
I just tried it. And like, look, it shows you right here.
Same issue we had in the...
And I just tested it.
We had that, we're fussing around with it for a while. We finally connected with your phone.
Check it out when it's built.
I'm sorry?
You have to combine it. Check it out when it's built.
Making you join by phone.
I will, I will. As a matter of fact, the other day, I went to...
I know. It should give me multiple options.
Having problems with my niece, so I went to physical therapy, and there was a lady that, that her mother lives up that way. She's having a lot of problems with water in her basement. So I'll come by and check it out. As a matter of fact, I know the building. It's working over there. I don't know if it's anything that has to do with any... At least, right?
They build normally in the water. We never build places.
This?
Okay.
It doesn't like say.
I've done that once.
You've done it?
I did it once, and I had problems.
This is annoying me. If I do this, it should have given me multiple options.
Okay. You know, that's one of the things that I... I don't remember that, because this was probably three months ago when I was, I told her, so I'll check it out soon. And I talked to, in fact, I talked to Jen, and she goes, you should go there on your own. Sometimes people read the water table as being here, and then it's actually here.
I logged off her account.
Really?
And it gives you options with different audiences. Yeah, that's...
So her account, because I switched over to Leanne's account. Yeah, so something specifically with Carrie's login is all grouped up on...
Do you have a certain amount of licenses to the town?
No, they did, and that's why she had to create one. Because we did have that issue for almost many people logging in and trying to screen. The original one was Leanne's. There was too many meetings going on, so that's created.
That's it.
All right, so unfortunately, at this point, we can't act on the cost to complete? Yeah, we can, I hope, right? We can get, we can talk, do that on the second? Yes, we'll do.
Where? Okay. We'll have to play with that after, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good evening. I'm the man, I mean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is to discuss a home occupation zoning bylaw. Presenting this?
Yes, Dan Higgins, Chairman of the Dighton Development and Industrial Commission. So what I've sent you was a proposal from the commission for some changes to the existing home occupation bylaws and use tables. We really would like to have the planning board be the impetus behind this, so that's why we're bringing it to you. Hopefully, it's something that you can support, move forward to a town meeting with whatever tweaks and modifications, you know, you feel are necessary. This is certainly our draft of what we're looking to do. But basically, and this is just for people who are not familiar with it, watching on Zoom later on, the town has two sections to the bylaws right now. They have home-based businesses by right and home-based businesses by special permit. We also have Appendix A that puts limits on the types of businesses that are allowed in residential zones. And we're suggesting some recommendation for changes to each of those sections. Just as an overview, right now, I don't have a complete tracking of the number of existing home-based businesses in towns, because what I have is based upon business certificates filed with the town clerk or information from the assessor's office. I would put it at somewhere around 85 home-based businesses in towns. I know personally that there, and I've heard even more anecdotally, that there are more than that. People who just, they haven't registered with the town clerk, they're not on the assessor's radar. So it could well be, you know, 95, 100 even, operations that are actually going on in town. Most of those are not large sources of taxable income for the town, because they're small size. But they are an important revenue stream for residents of the town, and they do provide services to people in the town. So, and also, three quarters of all small businesses start at home, and then if they're successful, grow from there. So there's no promise that these businesses will start home, grow, and stay indicted, but there's always that hope in that they can add to the commercial tax base. So I think it's important on several levels for trying to make it easier for people to operate such businesses. And the reason this falls under the Development and Industrial Commission is that it's our charter to try to promote local businesses, period. Large or small, whether they contribute to the tax base or not. So I just think that anything that helps move that forward is a good idea. The goal of what we're trying to do here is twofold. One is to provide clear protections to residential neighborhoods for people that are operating home-based businesses and stipulate more clearly what people are allowed to do. It's in the bylaws today about information about traffic and noise and that sort of thing. I just, we wanted to expand upon that to make sure and provide reassurance to people about what to expect if someone were to open a home-based business. And on the business side, what it means to actually be a good neighbor, to blend into the neighborhood while trying to operate a business. And those are the revisions that you'll see in Sections 2340 and 2350. But at the same time, we wanted to expand the types of businesses that are allowed, presuming that they meet those protections. So those are the revisions that you see in Appendix A. Some of them, we can talk about a little bit more, like I introduced the term artisan manufacturing, which we can talk about a little bit, what kind of businesses fall under that. I did also want to add that none of these changes impact agriculture or anybody running farm stands, selling honey, eggs. Those are all covered under the town's either right-to-farm bylaw or state, you know, provisions that allow for that kind of activity. So none of this affects any of that. But if I can just walk through some of the changes in the copy that you have, the red text are things that we'd like to add and/or strike through if they're, were the things we want to be deleted. And the first item that appears on both 2340 and 2350 is asking that people setting up these businesses fill out a business certificate with the town clerk. Right now, by state law, businesses are required to do that if they're operating as a DBA. If you're doing business, if you're John Smith doing business as John Smith, that's fine. If you're John Smith doing business as Smith Plumbing, that's a DBA. You should be filing a business certificate with the town. This just makes it mandatory that everybody who wants to operate a home business do that, just so that primarily, that is the trigger that goes to the building commissioner to evaluate whether what you're trying to do is proper for the bylaw. Is it a by right? Is it special permit? Without that trigger, nobody really knows what people are doing. So this just helps them if there is any zoning enforcement down the road, that the town's been notified about what's going on, and the building commissioners had an opportunity to talk to the people and make an assessment.
Is that a form, an existing form?
It is, yeah. And I also, we made a change to the lot, the provision about it has to be on the same property that the house resides on. So if, in fact, the owner owns adjoining property, it's under the same name, it can be treated for this purpose like one giant lot. Doesn't have to be on precisely the same lot that the house is on if you own the adjoining lot. And what we're describing here is something you're going to operate on the adjoining lot.
You struck out the five-year requirement.
And we struck out the five-year requirement. In reality, if somebody needs to build a garage to house what they're doing, and you said, fine, wait five years and then we'll let you do it, it just seemed like a hurdle that was unnecessary.
Okay.
So...
Got it. Okay, that makes sense.
The rest of this is additions regarding, a little bit more clear about hazardous materials, no offensive noise, smoke, vibrations, gases, smells, glare.
Who defines what an offensive noise is?
It is subjective, and the building commissioner is the zoning enforcement officer. I mean, it is true.
We don't have a town noise ordinance.
We do not. So it may be based upon the neighborhood. If your neighbors are right on top of you, what's an offensive noise is one thing. If your neighbors are quarter mile down the road, what's an offensive noise may be something else.
Yeah, just, yeah, it's a, it's a squishy, squishy term.
It is, it is.
In the, sorry, in the event that someone is running a business and does not register, what are the consequences that we...
Well, when they're operating...
Zoning enforcement officer.
Zoning enforcement, yeah. Just like any... We do, and I'm not sure that this is prohibited today, but just to spill it out and make that if somebody's operating or has heavy equipment that they need to garage there, that they are allowed to garage at least one commercial vehicle, not more than two tons, as long as it can be properly screened by planning or fencing from street or neighbors. And again, this may not be necessary, because it's probably already a true statement, but just for clarification, that if you're in an area governed by an HOA or a deed restriction, this in no way preempts that. You're still obligated to follow whatever the HOA guidelines are or whatever the deed restrictions or covenants are. So those would be for the changes for, go ahead.
So the, first of all, now you have, now your document has two 2350s. Because you have 2350 here, and the next section is 2350.
Correct, all right.
Just because it rolled. But how does this work with modifying a zoning bylaw? You can just add paragraphs and increment numbers?
No, you have to have a public hearing, and then it has to go to town.
Oh, I know, I know, but that, you can, in that, you have to do that for any bylaw change.
For the zoning bylaws, yes.
Zoning bylaws. But it's a big deal when you remove the content of a numbered paragraph, that you just say content deleted, and you leave the number there. Is it a big deal when you just add numbers?
Mm-mm.
No? That's hysterical.
Might have to change it, because it'll start going into the other one, right? That's what you mean?
Yeah.
Well, this, this one, yeah, you're gonna...
49A or something, whatever.
Yeah, you'll have to...
Yeah.
I don't know how you combine those, but...
Either that or...
Just make it a bolted list?
Since we, you would be 2358, and then it goes to 2351. Just when you go to do the amendment, you can just fix the numbering as there from that point, too. Does that make sense?
Sure. I just remember, because I guess you can't, you can't just delete a number, because then everything would be incremented.
Right.
Change the entire bylaw, just because you got rid of one.
Right.
That's why you leave the number there and you mark content, yeah, content deleted.
And that, yeah.
Otherwise, you'd have to...
That might be the best way.
Well, he's not deleting anything. He's...
Adding.
I just didn't know if there's something special about just adding additional numbers.
Section?
Sections.
No.
Okay. Sorry, continue.
Okay. No, that's the hardest question I have to answer. That's good. That's the hardest question I have to answer, that's good. The second part is about home occupations by special permit, which exists today, stating that all the protections that we stated under the special permit by right apply here also in terms of the neighborhoods and your neighbors, but also introducing the use of the premises for artisan manufacturing. And the definition that we have for artisan manufacturing is "production of goods by the use of hand tools or small-scale, light mechanical equipment occurring solely within an enclosed building where such production requires no outdoor operations or storage and where the production operations and storage of materials related to production occupy no more than a thousand square feet of gross floor area. Typical uses have negligible negative impact on surrounding properties and include woodworking and cabinet making, ceramic studios, jewelry manufacturing, similar types of arts and crafts, production of alcohol or food processing."
Yeah, I'd recommend that wind up in the glossary.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, so I'd add, I don't know what we did with the rest of the bylaw. We underlined it or italicized it, I forgot what we, so we'll not, but should definitely add that because that's something that's clearly defined. And I don't know if you want to also add offensive noise back there, too. Offensive noise. Odorous matter, that's a good one, too.
Might as well go for, you know, what you can get, so.
Odorous matter. I'm sorry, guys.
It's alright.
What if there's a business that's not listed here? Somebody does a certain.
Type of business?
Type of business, yeah.
So we're going to get to that in the appendix about the types of businesses. So in here, you'll see that, and one is, one thing we did add is that no more than two customers or pupils or patients can come for instruction. That's just to restrict traffic, you know. Not twenty-three fifty-seven. But in terms of the type of businesses, you know, we mentioned the artisan manufacturing. You will see in here, twenty-three fifty-six automotive service shops. And this is one that the committee, Joe's also in the committee, had a lot of discussion about.
Could you repeat that, Dan? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yeah, we, you'll see twenty-three fifty-six talks about automotive service shops.
Yeah.
And this is one that the committee had a lot of discussion about. And they actually exist today. There are people out there doing bodywork, engine repair, out of their houses, indicted, you know. So the question is, if they're not causing a problem now, because Jim's not getting any complaints, you know, they think they probably should be allowed, but with what kind of restrictions? And one thing that we lifted out of what's currently on the bylaws for landscapers operating out of a residential area, they're required to have at least ten acres of property to operate their landscaping business on in a residential neighborhood. The reason being is they're going to have heavy equipment that might need screening, they might be doing mulching. You want to have enough buffer between you and your neighbors to do that. So we thought along the same lines with something like this, as long as you have enough buffer. And for our purposes, we just couldn't agree on what is that correct buffer. So we also said ten acres. But I think a lot of the people in the committee, I think Joe, yourself included, thought that was a little high. But we couldn't really decide on what is an appropriate number. So for this purposes, we left it at ten with the hope that you might want to deliberate about that and come to what might seem a reasonable number, if you allow it at all. And as far as the appendix, it does only allow certain types of businesses, so it doesn't allow everything. One thing that we had a discussion about was retail of home manufactured goods. Not agricultural, but products you make at home, crafts, et cetera. And several people were against it, in part because traffic. It's one thing to say you can't have more than two customers there, but when you're running potentially a retail shop, not that these are big operations, but you don't really know how many people are going to stop by, pop in. So we did intentionally leave retail out of here. But we did add in, in addition to body shop repair, which I mentioned, business or professional offices. So.
That's fifteen.
Yeah, so that would be, let's see, you know, just examples, tax preparation, financial advice, attorney, therapist, anybody who might have a one-on-one consultation with a client, that sort of thing. Services, personal service establishments, so that would be nail salon, hair styling, music lessons, personal trainer, those kind of things.
How about dog grooming?
I don't know what that would be, you know, that's not called out specifically in the table today. I don't know where that falls. I don't know if that would be considered personal service or not. But it's, I mean, that's a good question, and that might be a question for Jim. It's like, what, if somebody wants to do dog grooming today, and we've had to look them up on the table, where would we find them? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, the reason I say that, right, and I'm going to say it right here on camera, so God and everybody can hear me. I've made several complaints to the building commissioner about a business in town that's creating a hazard with traffic. Okay, and the only reason I know this is because I almost drove into a vehicle pulling out of there. And I really didn't pay much attention to it, until I almost drove into another vehicle at the same location. And I was like, wow, something going on over there, right? So I started looking, showing up, there's something going on over there. So a third time, and it just happens, you know, I head up one thirty-eight a lot, somebody else pulls up in front of me. So I'm like, what is going on over here? So now I start eyeballing the place, figured out what's going on, said something to the building commissioner, and Carrie, today, they've looked into it, they tell me they can't do nothing because there's nothing in our bylaw that pertains to dog grooming. They don't require a business certificate, they don't have to pay any personal property tax, and they can just function as they are. And I'm going to tell you right now, it's a hazard, and somebody's going to get hurt. It's right near your street, Joe. Okay? So maybe something like that needs to be incorporated. And I'm really impressed and thankful that you guys are doing this because this is very important. And when I read this today in the packet, I was like, wow, this is what we need. Because we need a little more teeth, and not that we were trying to be rough on business people, especially small business people, and believe me, I had a small business in this town, and they never made it easy for me. But that being said, I think anybody working in the town, working out of your own property, making money, should pay their fair amount of taxes. I know I always did. So that's all I got to say on that. Hopefully, we can give the zoning enforcers some more teeth. I've also made several complaints about a local landscaper. Nothing gets done about it. So I'd like to say that on camera. Thank you.
Animal clinic, number four.
That'd be a question for Jim, what is?
But if you didn't, if you didn't have any requirement for anything by right, then up until now, well, we don't yet, but you know what I mean? The intent is to, is to do that. Because even here, you look at it, and it says that it requires a special permit.
And maybe, not necessarily as part of this, but just in general, that's something that the planning board may want to look at, is reviewing the appendix A for what is, what's falling out that we can't really classify and, you know, examples, ones that what he's mentioning being one of them.
You know, the day that there's a bad accident out in front of this particular address is going to set me off. I'm going to tell you that right now. Because it's a hazard, somebody's going to get hurt, is all I got to say.
So just for clarification, when I spoke to Jim about that matter, they actually, they do have to get a business certificate.
I talked to Jim, he didn't say anything about a business certificate.
Well, that's actually state law. If you're, if you're operating as a DBA, that was my statement earlier, so.
So it would depend on how they're running that business. If they're doing as John Smith, they're not required to get a business certificate. But if they're saying John Smith grooming, then they have to get a business certificate.
Right, and that triggers the assessor so that they can find out what they have for personal property and taxes.
So that would be something that the town clerk or the assessor would have to enforce.
Must feel like we need to add.
I contacted the clerk, they have no certificate, so.
So. The other thing is, when I spoke to Jim, it was an as-of right, no permits required because it's an as-of right. And it's, they took it under as the person, well, I don't say they, but the thought is personal service establishment. And then under Section five point five four, no, I'm sorry, Section five four one one, there's no reason for a sight camera view either. So that's why Jim couldn't enforce anything in that point because there was no permissible, permissible event that he can go and enforce.
But no one even told these people to get a business certificate.
But it's a, it's a business by right, it's not required.
As far as, that's talking about a town clerk in that department. As far as the planning board's department, there's no permissible event or permit required. So there's nothing that the planning board can do on that.
But this should be correct.
Well, that's, that's what this effort is.
Yeah, I like this.
So.
But this effort is a balance. It's more restrictions about keeping the neighborhood, I keep saying protected, but I mean, you know, as a residential feel, but giving more flexibility to who can operate what kind of business at the same time. And so lifting some restrictions there, trying to balance those two.
I think in both of these situations, for the as-of right and special permit, you probably want to add something about intrusion to public ways or something. Like, you know, you talk about parking, which is, you know, important in both cases, but to your point, I mean, if they're going to be operating on the road, cars can't back out onto William Street, you know?
Yeah, I mean, one day I saw it, right?
Allow cars to turn around.
The whole driveway was full of cars. And there's a lady sitting out on the stone wall with her dog, waiting her dog waiting for somebody to come pick her up. Right, and we.
Should have given her a ride, buddy.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
That's really what I had to cover. I just wanted to, really at this point, turn it over to the planning board for discussion and see if it's something that you would support moving forward to with whatever caveats and changes you want moving forward.
Yeah, thank you very much for doing this work.
Yeah, if you want to send us the source information, the source document, because it's got a little jumbled on the PDF on one of the pages here.
Yeah, on the very end, I just noticed that.
It looked like when it changed it in the PDF, it's like.
It's a different language.
Okay, I'll send that to you.
We can go and like, we can write us some comments and send it back, and then we can have a discussion in a future, future meeting, and then blow it on it.
Alright.
Or, well, actually, we have to have.
You have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing, we have to go through the process. So the intent would be targeting the annual town meeting, right? So we have, we have time on our hands on this.
Alright, thank you.
So I think the first thing we would do is come up with a draft of the edited bylaw, of the revised bylaw, and then we can start going from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Alright. So we have a few more items on the agenda here. So let's go to discuss coordination between town permitting authorities and project inspections. So in your packets, you have a really amazing flow chart. It's just, it's amazing, incredible.
One of your favorite things.
The typo.
Flow charts. It's not one of my favorite things, but it's a necessity, especially when you're trying to launch a torpedo. It's very important. So by Dan's recommendation, we went with something called a swim lane arrangement. So, so anybody, once they figure out what they're looking at, can look at this and go, alright, what are the touchpoints on the different parties that are involved in an application to the town? This is not just planning board, this is the town in general. Because our whole goal for, for looking at this process is to try and streamline things. Applicant comes in, what do I do? I have, I want to, I want to build something. So normally, everybody just goes, I want to build something. Let's go visit the building inspector. And so, you know, we want to make sure people understand there is a main hub for when you come in with an application. And so right away, you look at the top, that's everything the applicant has to do. The yellow, that's everything the planning board does, planning slash zoning, it's combined in one because it's one office. And green is CONCOM, and on the bottom is the peer review engineer. And so the way the flow works is applicant comes in, top left, contacts the planning zoning, and in this case, planning zoning office manager is Mrs. Easterday, determines project implications. Do you want to talk about what that might be? Like, what, 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 what? What are the touchpoints?
Touchpoints on requesting the scope of services?
No, like, okay, so I guess that's kind of a leftover there from when we were trying to figure out if their application was, would have conservation implications or, I guess we don't really need that language in there anymore, do we?
No.
Remember, we had that on there initially because it was, they were going to come to you as a clearinghouse to figure out which applications to submit.
Correct.
And we figured out, well, maybe we just go out for a peer review first, peer review, scope of services, and then work from there.
Go from there.
Yeah, okay. So, so the flow goes from top to bottom. So the difference between this and what we do now is right now, when an applicant comes to us, they submit an application, and then we review their application, and then we vote to request that the engineer provides a scope of services. And then the engineer goes and gets the, gets the okay to go provide a scope of services. They go off and provide a scope of services. Next meeting comes in, and we get a thing in the mail.
Provide cost.
What's that?
Provide a cost.
Scope of services, it's cost, right? Cost to do the work, the scope for the work. And then the following meeting after that is we get the document from the, from the engineer that says, okay, this is what it's going to cost to do this review. And then we vote on it and say, yep, let's go ahead and do that. And then it goes off, and then there's, there's, there's funding exchange between the applicant and the, and the town. And then the town in turn pays, pays the engineer, and then the whole thing goes on for like three or four meetings. Well, this short circuits all that in that when the applicant submits the application, once that application is submitted, the planning board and zoning office manager requests engineering scope of services. So you just saved four meetings, right? Because we know we're going to want them to give us a estimate of what it's going to cost. There's absolutely no reason to hold a meeting to talk about that. So this makes it faster, right? I got a recommendation from Dan. If you look at the box there, it says zoning office, planning and zoning office manager requests engineering scope of services if necessary, right? Because sometimes we will get an application and go, yeah, maybe that's, we can, we can waive that because it isn't necessary. I wanted to leave that language in there, and we have the words following submission of application. I'm going to change it so it actually, instead of doing that, it's going to, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be an arrow. And then, once that happens, it triggers the peer review engineer to generate the scope of services on the bottom there, right? Once that's done, they provide, they provide it to the applicable, the appropriate department. So you look, you got that decision tree comes up, CONCOM gets it if it applies to them, planning board zoning gets it, and then that then gets provided to the applicant. So you back up to the applicant swim lane, right? They receive the scope of services and make payment to the town. Alright, so if you look at that gray box there, it says, you know, payment received and deposited, and engineer notified to begin review. Again, doesn't involve a meeting. It's just, it needs to happen. If it's already been determined that it needs to happen, it happens. You don't need to meet to talk about, should we let this happen? Because we're not going to say no. We might decide early on, it isn't necessary, in which case you skip to the end. So then what happens next? The engineer conducts a review, and there's a, there's a double arrow there between the engineer and the applicant, where that's where questions get asked. Did you want to be? I think you mentioned about wanting to be in the middle of that at some point, no?
For what?
Between the engineer and the applicant.
Between the engineer and the applicant?
See that double arrow that goes from the bottom to the top?
Yeah.
You're not, nobody here is in the loop.
Right.
Review, comments, and exchange, review, comment, exchange. Maybe should just say with.
Applicable board.
With applicable board in the loop, right?
Yeah.
As they're going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth with comments and reply to comments and comments and reply to comments, it doesn't have to come before.
It doesn't come before us. It does not.
It does not, no. No, maybe Carrie wants to see it, a CC.
Yeah, you should maybe be the conduit, whoever's on the board or whoever is.
Yeah.
The representative, in our case, you.
Yeah.
You're the conduit for. The back and forth.
Right.
I, I think we wanna.
Just so it's not all, you know.
Yeah.
Backdoor conversation.
Correct.
Well, we.
So they would, they would converse with me and then I would just relate to you.
Correct.
As a board.
And if it, if it gets to be too much, it can just be back and forth with you on copy. It's, it's on a case by case basis, right?
Right.
If the engineer technically works for the town.
Yep.
So you're the.
Liaison.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So.
You know, general contractor, that's, you know.
Project manager.
Yes, exactly.
So do, do you want them, do you want them to message to you or message with you on?
So the way Weston Sampson wants it is I converse with them. If it's determined, so say it's something that requires a lot of updates or, um. Like Brook Street, right? A lot of discussions going back between the engineers and instead of having the middle man. What Weston Sampson requires is that, okay, fine, the two engineers can talk, but, or email. But everything has to be CC'd to the planning board, which is me.
Okay, yeah, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna change that review slash comment exchange. And it's just, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a yellow box with you, it'll be you.
Okay.
And then there'll be double arrows on both sides, but you're the, you're the in-between on a case by case basis second tweak.
Okay.
So this is a work in progress, gentlemen.
Yes.
Alright, so applicant replies to the engineering comments. So this whole process goes back and forth, it churns. And once it gets done, at the right side of that bottom box is final report. And it goes to both, to the applicable boards once again. So then, uh, to the right of those two applicable boards, you got, uh, the magic right of appeal. Uh, period, subject to statutory timeline. We, we did actually find the mass general law requirement for a thirty day right of appeal. Period, uh, after a decision.
Yeah, I forget which one that was, subdivisions is twenty days.
Subdivisions is twenty.
Special permit is twenty.
Yep.
Uh, variant, that's through ZVA, but variance is twenty.
Yep.
I forget what it was, but there was something for a thirty day.
Okay.
Which we never use. I, I haven't used it yet, the thirty day appeal.
Okay, I thought that was.
Thirty day appeal?
A thirty day appeal, yeah. He had, there was a law, I'd have to pull it up, I forget which one it was. I've never used a thirty day appeal.
I thought that's typically what we told everybody was thirty days.
Twenty.
Tell them twenty, okay, alright. So, so that's, that's the magic, that's, that's like the cool off period after we make a decision, right of appeal statutory right. And then once that's done, the applicant receives a decision from impacted board and that's when then they get a signed decision from. Their application, write to the signed decision and that's when they can get a permit and move on from there.
This saves a lot of time and it saves the applicant, could save the applicant a lot of money.
Yeah, this is, this is, you know, you always have a plan because you need something to deviate from, right? That's the joke. But, but it's not gonna apply in every situation, but normally. We're trying to streamline the front end because the front end is always really, really slow. Because it's like, oh, we're gonna meet, we're gonna talk about it and then we're gonna ask for a ROM. Then we're gonna meet and look at the ROM and vote on the ROM, then we're gonna, you know, it adds too much.
The waiting period is what kills everybody.
Yeah.
I've been on that end many, many times and it was.
And like, you know, and, and there's also the idea of, you know, with a, a current applicant where they would love to be able to, we gotta talk about. Again, this is a case by case basis, right? So, uh, they'd like to, hey, it would have been great if we can get an estimate upfront and figure out how to fund it like that. Because, you know, you can, there's no reason why you can't fund an account to some estimated amount. If, you know, if the applicant can handle that, of course, right? And then it can be paid out as required. Where we, we get bills and things would be all tracked. Uh, but at the end, once the project is done, anything left over would be returned. Right? So that would save a lot of extra time in between. But I think maybe even if with this new process, that may not even be necessary.
Right.
Because we don't have to meet to vote, we don't have to meet to vote. It's just like, if there's a requirement, request, request, uh, request a scope.
Yep.
Request a scope, it comes here and then there's no vote. It's, it's applicant, here's, here's the scope, do you wanna pay it? Yes, paid, done, move on.
Yep.
So it, it wouldn't even, you wouldn't even have to, like, right now we have the applicant who's like, you know, we, we have all these extra meetings. And because these extra meetings are happening and trying to get the engineer involved, uh, and then getting us involved to, to get a meeting, look, it's just, it adds a lot of extra back and forth. And with this, I think that'll short circuit all of that.
And you just said it and you referenced it earlier, but just to be clear. Ideally, when we do the scope of services, it's an end to end scope that we're requesting. To the extent that there's enough information that Weston Sampson can do it and they're willing to put up that much money upfront. As opposed to what we've heard from a couple applicants, which is. Why do I have to keep doing this step at a time? Like you give, here's one and then another and then another and every time something changes, why can't you just tell me upfront? How much is all gonna be, I'll give you a check. Um, and that just streamlines it for them.
Yep.
And to the extent possible, because sometimes it's not enough information upfront to do that.
Right.
Or that's a lot of money to post upfront. But that aside, you know, ideally it's just like. One scope of services with a dollar amount that encompasses the entire project.
You can't account for like issues and, and like stormwater enforcement, like that's, that's outside of this.
Yeah.
Right, that's, that's still gonna happen.
One offs.
This is, that, that's exactly, this is just looking at a normal process where we're trying, just trying to make it faster at the front.
Okay.
Uh, but even like, uh, that applicant was talking about the, um. They needed engineering, engineering observation of the work being done.
Yep.
That's not part of the normal scope of services.
It's not.
Yeah, so that would still.
That's separate, that's outside.
That would be something that came after, but again, that held up this situation because we had to wait to get it, to vote on it. We had to wait to, to meet, to vote on asking what it costs to get the estimate so that we can vote on the estimate and go, and then they can pay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My gosh.
Yeah.
And then we only do one meeting a month now in the summer. So that, you know.
That prolongs it more, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It makes it a four month process.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? Because you, you need four meetings to, to do everything I just said.
Yeah.
It, it takes a whole summer, which, you know. Timing is everything, right? Um, so I'm gonna make those two changes, the thing over there with the, with the review. Three changes, I gotta fix the typo, the typo on the bottom left box. Uh, and then following submission of application, I'll just. I'll clean that up, send it out. But that's kind of what we wanna go with.
Absolutely.
And it makes things easier, so. Um, sound okay, gentlemen?
Sounds good to me.
Alright, thank you.
So do you want this on the next meeting agenda for final?
Yeah, we can just throw it out just as a, hey, by the way, this, these are the changes and this is. Public hearing was continued, right?
Uh, we need to continue it again, yes.
Okay. And in the. I've got it here, here it is, it's, it's, cause we're here. Was it an email, yeah? Yes, there is. Alright, so email, um, from the applicant, Genevieve Reynolds?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, Carrie, we'd like to continue the planning board hearing as we are still waiting for the N-RAN approval. Uh, can you please let us know the next meeting day? So, is it planned to continue that to October second?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, someone like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for David Butler, trustee of the Butler Family Irrevocable Trust, eight thirty-three William Street. Map eight, lots twenty, twenty-one, special permit application to the October second, twenty twenty-four, planning board meeting.
Don't make that motion.
Just a second, whoop, Woody seconded it.
Woody seconded, alright, discussion, very none, all on paper?
Aye.
Aye. It's five ayes, thank you. Uh, Carrie, is there any correspondence?
No.
Public input? Hi.
Hey, how's it going? I'm Ryan Miranda, the director of facilities at.
Yeah, please go, uh, go to the microphone, please, and just state your name and address. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Ryan Miranda, the director of facilities at Bristol County Agricultural High School. Um, this isn't a, like a big ask, we're just looking to move forward with. Uh, so, as the growth of the school, we're, uh, we're coming to grips that we need to expand our parking. Um, and so we're just beginning a feasment study with a parking company that's gonna help us to kind of strategically. Find the best spots to either expand some of the existing parking lots or to add new. Uh, but one of the issues that's coming down the pipe pretty quick is that we have about sixty kids that are gonna be getting their license. Within the next couple of months and we're, we're out of parking. Uh, with all the activities that happens during the day with outside events coming in, you know, we're, we're struggling with parking needs. And so I'm looking just to, just to move with permission to put a gravel lot, uh, behind Keith Hall. It'll give us about sixty lots, sixty spots on the property temporarily until we conclude our feasment study with the parking company.
Um, so. What changed?
Well, um.
Like, why, why is this suddenly a revelation that just?
It's not a revelation, so we knew coming out of the project that this was gonna be an issue. Um, and so, uh, one of the, the things that got cut was, was parking, uh, early on, just because, you know, I mean, we expanded the school by sixty percent. And so, uh, we knew this was, this was coming, um, so nothing really changed. Uh, I guess we just kicked it down the road a little too, too long.
Uh, what's the, what's your timeline, when are you trying to do this?
For this, uh, so probably by November, this is where.
Really fast, okay.
Very fast.
Um, is this, uh, what would happen if you didn't get this approved?
Um.
Where would these cars go? I mean, that's a lot of cars.
It's a lot of cars, so.
I'm sorry?
Off route.
It would be, well, I mean.
Yeah.
To the right with that grass lot, right?
So it's behind Keith Hall, it's a.
No, but I'm saying they would continue to park to the right.
And so this gravel lot would give us the opportunity to be able to plow it and.
Correct.
Are you experiencing like, um, more students now?
So we, you know, typically Bristol County was about two, three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty. Now we're, we're about six hundred and forty-two students.
Are you, is that capacity there?
We're at, this year is our full capacity. Staff, so staff raised up forty percent and then student body raised by sixty percent.
So six forty, that's your max?
Yes.
Wow, okay. And just a quick question, I assume you meant twelve inches of dense grade, not feet?
Yes, twelve inches.
You walked in, we were calculating how many dump trucks. Plus, we came up with three hundred and fifteen loads.
Just checking. Just saying, hey, all power to you, but I did some quick math, I'm like, yeah.
It's three hundred and fifteen.
That's a typo.
Twelve inch, sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay. We're just having.
Yeah, me too.
And what's there now is just grass or farm.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's in between, um, pasture and, um, farmland, like hayfield. And so it's kind of like a rough terrain, um, so that's, that was the medias, you know, spot that we decided, you know, less impacting to, to the farm.
Would students do it?
Would students do what?
Would students work on it?
Uh, so a bit, I mean, we, we wanna do it pretty fast. And we, we don't have a big excavating, uh, machine, so, uh, we'd probably hire out somebody to excavate it. And then we would spread it with students and, and stuff, so it's gonna be a shared project, yeah.
So I, I see this, um, I was talking to Mrs. Easterday earlier about this, um, and I see this as a, a public safety concern. Because if you're gonna have two hundred cars. Going god knows where, um, I mean, it's gonna be.
Sixty spots here.
Sixty spots?
Yes.
Oh, you're, you're getting, okay, gotcha, sixty, you're adding sixty spots. And so you're using this as an overflow so that they can park.
Right.
In a safe manner and not park everywhere else. Because they're still gonna come anyway.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So the concern is we don't know where they're gonna put their.
And it's gonna help us out too with, uh, hosting, I mean, this past year we hosted probably. Twenty, twenty-five events from outside people and it was, you know, during the school year, uh, school day, so it was pretty tough.
When do you anticipate ever paving this?
So after the parking study is done, uh, we're, we're probably going to be looking for probably a hundred, a hundred and twenty spots permanent.
And then what would happen to this area?
We'd probably restore it unless this would be, you know, during the feasment study if they said this is a good spot.
This is the area that'll just augment this.
And then we put in the infrastructure for stormwater.
This one's kind of unusual.
Yeah. Uh, the only thing I think about is if we have a big storm, uh, you know, snowstorm.
Mm-hmm.
You gotta plow that.
Yeah.
That's a huge gravel, because that gravel is gonna be somewhere else.
Yeah.
Depending on who's.
That's why they're getting twelve feet. That's why they're getting twelve feet of it. Um, I mean, we can, we can discuss a temporary thing. Just to, because this is a school situation and, you know, I, I see this.
CONCOM is gonna have to look at this also, right?
Why?
I'm trying to find the email from, from Jim.
That's. While you looked at it, I assume you'd have traffic control at the entrance and exit of that, like you do at the crosswalks and all that.
Yeah.
Okay. Just because every morning, I go by every morning.
And, and if there are curb cuts.
You guys do a great job.
What's that?
Is there a curb cut? How would they access it?
It's already an.
So there's an existing lot behind there, we're just, yeah.
There's no wetlands there, is there?
No wetlands there.
So this influx of people or students, is that new this year?
Uh, so this is, so the last four years, we've increased our student body by, uh, per freshman class by about forty to fifty kids. And so this is our kind of, our whole year, that we're at full, full capacity.
Okay. It's a long list to get in.
I have some other questions, but they don't pertain to the planning board, so.
You can ask, ask away if you want.
Try to behave yourself.
I'm trying.
Oh, okay, mark this day down.
You know. As a taxpayer, I mean, do you have money in your budget for this?
We do.
Because the town of Dayton and the other town in this county is on the hook for this.
Sure.
Um, remodel job that you did over there.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess we're gonna have to pay for that too.
So, um, normally there's a site plan review that has to go along with this. This is definitely above the, the minor site plan, uh, threshold because it's sixteen thousand two hundred square feet.
Right.
Um. The, um. What to say about this, um. Yeah, my, my, my concern is still from a public safety perspective that this is a situation that, um, because it's a school and because there's, the, the kids in there, students are, are involved in this, um.
You've seen the way some of those students drive, haven't you?
I have, I have two of them in my house.
Yep. Just as bad as some of the parents.
Yes.
Ooh.
Not gonna lie.
So what, what is the, uh, anticipated, uh, timeline for, um, the parking study?
So we'll probably come back within probably, probably five weeks, we'll be back. And hopefully to do this for next summer.
Okay.
Could you put any parking restrictions on some of those students?
What do you mean?
Like, uh. You know. Age restriction or class restriction.
I mean, right now it's by seniority.
By seniority.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and that's a good way of doing it.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, that's a good way of doing it. Um, I agree with Jeff with the public safety thing, and, and I think we should take this under advisement. Talk to the police chief.
Yeah, we had a conversation with the, with the, uh, with Tom Ferry and the police chief.
Yeah, well, we need to have that, Jim.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, so, um, yeah, I just, I, I wanna chew on this a little bit, um, I do wanna get their, their inputs. So I know I, I couldn't find an email from Jim, but Jim specifically talked about, uh, not being concerned about the material because it's, uh.
Already a sub base for us.
Yeah.
It's already a sub base and it's not going to retain water, but I can't find the darn email. It might, it might, there might have been more than one thread, that's why, um.
I can get it for you in one minute.
Yeah, I can't find the darn thing, but I didn't wanna.
What was the comments from the, uh, police?
Well, the, that conversation was more so about, uh, what we're gonna do with, with Center Street, uh, just because of the speed and just, you know.
Said something specifically about.
Particularly when people breach that hill, they just hammer it down there, so we're, we're looking into reducing the speed on, on that road.
Still reduce it more?
Well, it's thirty now.
Yeah.
And when you get into Berkeley, it goes down to twenty.
Oh, God, I already got stopped there. It's not good.
So.
I don't, I don't think I'm making it up, I def- definitely did read a Jim Maguire email.
The, the initial one that just says.
Did the chief have any comments at all as to what you're doing, you know, did you talk to him about this?
Yeah.
Did he have any comments about this?
Uh, so like I said, it was more so about, you know, Center Street, just kinda trying to figure out what we can do if we're gonna.
The question is, you know, they're here looking to have an answer from us and what are we gonna talk to the chief and whoever?
Well, I think the cars are gonna travel the road anyway, whether this goes in or not.
Yeah.
They're just either gonna continue up this way or loop around and keep looking for parking, so this gives an end result to them getting off the road.
I think we should give them a temporary approval with a definite end time where they have to revisit this with their study to get their site plans submitted.
Yeah.
But the, the, the issue is that school started and this has to get resolved before the winter.
Right.
Before the ground gets cold and you can't do this.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not gonna be constructing a permanent parking lot for the summer time anyway. Uh, so, but they can have the site plan in and everything ahead of time and the weeks after their study is completed, that they can proceed forward with the formal plans for a lot.
Right.
So the one hundred or whatever parking space is not gonna be on the same.
Sixty, sixty.
No, sixty, but then afterwards, they're gonna go come in for.
They're gonna come in with a site plan after their study is complete.
Right.
And may or may not select it in the same area.
They may not select.
And then we, we would restore this back to farmland.
Wow, that to me is.
They, they might just look at it and go, well, just put it there.
Right.
So you don't plan on paving it?
No.
Not right now.
Well, not right now.
No, not now.
It's gonna be a mess in the winter, you know that. It's gonna be a mess.
Yeah, but the alternative, they're parking in the mud to the right of that.
The thing that bothers me now is the fact that they're not, you're not even sure if they're gonna be putting the permanent parking space here. That to me is a waste of time, a waste of money, a waste of everything, cause this is not gonna be a cheap thing to do and.
Correct.
Yep.
But it's, it's a, it's a Band-Aid for the time being, cause I need something.
Yeah.
And the car's gotta go somewhere, so I'm, I'm leaning towards, we, we offer a, a temporary, a, a, an approval with a definite ending where we need to revisit this with our site plan. I don't know what, what an acceptable time range is on that, two months from now.
I believe you said you expect.
Yeah, they, so we're, we're meeting with them the third, um, to start kind of our kickoff with the feasibility study and then, uh, probably five weeks after that, so.
Yeah, so it. In two, in two months is when they will have the study back and then, but then you have to submit a site plan at that point for your permanent solution.
Correct.
But in the meantime, we're talking September, October, November, and then like the first half of the school year is over and you got, uh, sixty cars parked, god, god knows where.
Well, as Nancy mentioned earlier, they actually have existing approval for overflow.
To park here?
Straight out front.
Not here, no, not here, uh, over by the library.
Right, yeah, and they gotta hove it back.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's where they wind up.
Okay.
So that's the same scenario there, you go, that's not paved either.
Right.
Yeah.
This is unbelievable.
Plow that.
That's yeah.
Tom Ferry. Highway Superintendent.
So you'd ra- I mean, you'd rather plow dense grade than grass?
Tell me you're gonna plow that.
Not, that's on the school, but I'm saying, you know what I mean? Then you'd rip this up, then people would be upset that that's ripped up.
How do you feel about the decision of the chairman is coming up with?
This is, this is temporary.
Of what he just said.
This is temporary though.
About us being able to plow it or not?
No, 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 no.
Temporary.
Temporary, yeah.
Yeah, that's, you know.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
How many parking spaces does the square footage that you, you said sixteen thousand square feet?
Right, so it'd be about sixty spots.
Because my thought is if you have, if he can reduce it down to ten thousand square feet, you can still submit a minor modification on that and then there can be a formal act on that. But then that would be what, six parking spaces? I'm just.
Yeah, it's not much.
Losing six, right, losing six parking spaces?
I'm, I'm just wondering how they managed to put that whole addition on there without the adequate parking, that's something that.
Well, the students, the students are part of the calculation.
The square footage should be.
Oh, okay, well, it probably, I, I didn't, I haven't looked at the numbers, maybe you meant it.
Yeah, no, we.
I mean, we, we could fit everybody, but then we would lose all our visitor parking. Um, and, and then we just opened up the vet center and so we lose parking for that, so. And then anytime we have an event during the school year, it's.
Yeah, I hate the idea that that is a safety, a safety issue.
That's, I mean, normally I'd say, sorry, come back with your application, but my concern is there are students involved and they're.
Yeah.
And they're parking everywhere, but that's, that's my, that's my only snag.
That's what I don't like.
That's, I mean, if it was anything else, I'd say, sorry, submit your application.
Sure.
And in this case, it's a, it's a major, so it'd be a public hearing.
And at the same time, the planning board.
Not with just the site plan.
Not with a site plan, right.
The planning board goofed on allowing the, the school to go up without, no?
That was through ZBA, I believe.
No?
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't know.
They came before us.
Was it you?
Not, not before, I mean, we don't, without running the numbers on the square footage of the building, you don't really know. They probably had sufficient for the use of the building. I, I don't, I haven't looked at the numbers, it's right here, here's a table.
Well, for a school, I don't think we probably, I don't think we have that on there for a school. And they have no way of knowing exactly how many cars are gonna be, uh, involved in this whole thing because they're talking students, visitors and the staff, so it's almost impossible to, to know that.
Excuse me.
But schools may not be on there.
Schools are not on here.
That's what I thought.
So what do you, what are your thoughts on the minor modification?
That would require them reducing it from fourteen thousand down to ten thousand.
From the, from the six to the ten thousand, then he can aptly apply for a minor modification.
But that would lose.
But he's losing six.
Twenty out of the sixty. If you're reducing it by a third, if.
Yeah.
It's fourteen thousand now, roughly.
Sixteen.
If you ask him to cut it to ten, that's.
To ten.
He'd lose like a third.
Because the requirement for a minor modification is ten thousand square feet. If it exceeds that, it automatically goes into a major modification.
So if you, if you get forty out of sixty, ask if we were to do it.
Yeah. It's just a, a thought for consideration, uh.
Although, I mean, we have two options, that being one, the other being what Jeff just suggested. It sounds like we have the flexibility to opt for either based upon whatever the board decides. Is that a true statement? Jeff's approb- Jeff's proposal is within our purview?
Well, I'm not too sure, because there's no two, there's no section. The board has to act on whatever they're applying for or asking for. And what he's asking for right now exceeds the minor modification, automatically trips it up to the major modification. Other than that, the board really has. But I, my thought is when it comes from a public safety issue, that would refer back to the zoning enforcement officer alongside with the police and the fire chief. So it would be more of his call, I would think.
I mean, like Jim has the authority.
Well, it's our call if it's gonna be a minor or major site plan review based on square footage and parking spots.
Correct.
Okay, so obviously it's a major.
Yeah, with the square footage, yeah.
Obviously, we need to talk to the police chief and the fire chief and the building commissioner or the zoning enforcer, so.
Well, zoning enforcer's already chimed in.
You located his email, right?
Um.
You could have come in with something.
It was just visited by the members of the, and then, uh, side of EBA. They made me aware of dire concern with parking. This is the first year that the school has seen full occupancy. They explained to me that the amount of parent drop-offs and school age drivers has increased significantly, causing some congestion issues at school grounds. They have just en- engaged an engineering firm to conduct a full assessment of school grounds including parking area and traffic flows. That report will take quite a bit of time to generate and will be months away from completion. Uh, the question raised to me today by the school was, can they add a gravel parking area that says approximately ten thousand square feet? So he was off a little bit, um, cause he didn't have the actual square footage. In size to alleviate the congestion with some type of expedited approval, uh, or blessing from the pl- planning board. To be clear, they plan to modify the campus and apply for site plan review once the engineering report is complete. But the gravel parking area will give immediate relief to the current issue. And that's my motivation, is looking at that, knowing, you know, I just, I, I think this is, this is a special case and um, and when, when the site plan comes in, yes, I, I, I think we should engage the police chief. I, I, I I think we should address this this evening.
Yes, I do too. I, I agree one hundred percent because the police chief is not gonna go against that. But if somebody gets hurt there or whatever, it's gonna be on us and I don't want that. That's my, no matter what, they, they're gonna vote for it because it's a safety issue.
Right. So, um, I wanna entertain a motion to, um, provide a temporary approval, uh, for this project to go forward, uh, with the proposed square footage here and the drawing provided by the, uh, by a gentleman here, um, with the intent to set a meeting for, for two months from today to, uh, review the traffic study, which case, at, at which time we need to get a, a site plan application submitted. It's a long motion, but, do you hear that?
And it's recorded.
Thankfully, we record this. If my phone picks it up.
A second.
I'm sorry, who?
Uh, did anybody?
No, nobody made the motion.
I'll make a motion too.
Okay.
All right, motion second, uh, made, uh, discussion. Mr. Woods, you wanna state your concerns?
I abstain.
Um, any further discussion? I'm hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go, Chris. All right, so it's, uh, four ayes, you wanna catch it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question of, uh, Mr. Brandon, approved chair?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a request. Um, you said you talked to Tom Ferry?
Yes.
One of the things we have to track for the MS four that we file with the EPA, we do it easy every year is among the parking that is pervious, of course, they're pushing more and more pervious. So my request relative to this temporary that's been granted tonight, um, when this thing is all laid out and whatever, if you would just give, uh, either me or Mr. Ferry something in writing indicating that a gravel parking lot has been constructed temporarily, yada, yada, some details about it and talk about, um, that it's pervious and that the stormwater. Their stormwater management system over there is extremely unique. This is on the north campus. It's the only one we know of in the state that does not discharge into any body of water. Even the EPA was not aware of how this works, so because it's so unique, we just wanna have it on the record that it's still unique and then when you get the final thing done, we'd want that because they're gonna, even with a paved parking lot, they're gonna be looking for uh, as much, uh, pervious surface, so again, this is, they, I know this is, it is there, so just a request to keep stormwater in a loop. This doesn't get recorded this year, but it will be on next year's report and we can show what's being done to try to, uh, generate more pervious surface, but stormwater management.
I, I did find the email from Mr. Maguire, it was from today. Uh, it said, uh, morning, Ryan, so he's, like, he's emailing you on this. Uh, I have included Carrie Easterday, Ryan, because this is under public input. Please bring a few copies of this plan with you to the board members, that's what you provided this evening. And to Carrie, he said, this proposal does not require a building nor stormwater permit to disturb areas while under the stormwater threshold. Uh, the proposed surface is also pervious, so, so he kinda picked out what you said, um, about the material, but thank you. See you in a couple of months. Yep. All right, uh, next item is approval of the meeting minutes for August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, kinda skipped around here. Um, any other further input, ma'am?
The only reason I was here was sent to school, paid for stormwater today.
Okay.
And also, uh, Bruce Street, so, uh, this is discussed, and I have the emails that, uh, it was a communication between Mr. Lopez and Carrie. And I just wanna know, because what we said to them tonight, what today was, you had, you gave you conditional approval in August and now with the letter that came in in sixteenth September, it wasn't for Western and Samson.
Right.
Everything is okay with us and you have the okay from planning at Concom's tomorrow night.
Yep.
That you can start construction as long as Concom says to you, we can start construction, we're just waiting for that. So everyone, your board is fine, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And ours is, and if Concom says we're all set and they close the hearing, cause they're planning to start construction.
Next week.
Correct.
Yep.
And Western and Samson, uh, today, uh, the agreement was, um, they can dig it all up and put in that new drainage system, but nothing can be covered. Western and Samson will go down there and inspect it again before they put whatever's gonna be on top of it.
Yep.
And we still are insisting on a, uh, a test, if Mother Nature doesn't send them natural rainwater, they're gonna be bringing water in to actually put it in the basin so we can drink it, um. Mr. West and Samson said, that's not really required, and I said to him, it is in this town, simply because of the problems that we've had relative to that big basin and the fact that the building commissioner has said until those basins drain, there will be no, uh, permission to go live or anything, so, uh, Mr. Lopez knows that if Mother Nature doesn't cooperate, they're gonna have to bring in sufficient water to test the basin to see how fast it will drain.
What's, uh, what's the volume of sufficient water?
I think it's, it's, it's gonna have to be calculated, obviously. Um, but by the time it's done, once it's done with the water in it, if it doesn't start to go down, then it's gonna keep filling it up if the thing won't drain, so.
Okay.
We, we've been pretty assured by Mr. Samson, it's gonna work. I said, it's not a matter of questioning it, it's a matter of
demonstrating.
What has gone on.
Yep.
Literally since, well, they said twenty-one, I said, we've worked it since two thousand eighteen. So anyhow, that's, that's where we are, so I just wanna make sure everything's okay with your board, we're all set, I'll go to Concom tomorrow night.
Yeah, we're good, thank you very much. All right, uh, wants to do a adjourn? All right, uh, listen to a jargon.
A jargon, huh?
Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Good night, cable.